Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. Today is Monday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. A meeting starting called the meeting to order at six oh eight P. M. Roll call, please, Ms. Garcia. We do have some people online. Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Miss Fave?
Present.
Ms. Brunel? Mr. Romero? Uh, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Burks?
Here.
Mrs. Feliciano-Sims?
Here.
Mr. Wellahan? He's here. Mr. Calamore?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Um, did you want to do the student reps? We have Cheyenne Hall?
Here.
Kiyomatis?
Here.
Great, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to recognize that we have State Rep Patricia Duffy here with us this evening. Um, I'd like to make a motion to go out of order. Um, so, Ms. Tensley-Williams, could you honor it? Okay, so there's a motion to take out of order, um, item, agenda item recognition? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, great. Welcome, Ms. Duffy. We finally got to do this right. Right in the center of attention. This way, that way. To the left. No. Uh, you know, I'll have my back to some. Um. On screen. Rosalie Tensley, uh, Williams was honored by the. God. Um, uh. Uh, in recognition of. Black excellence on the hill, honorary. By. I am always proud. Well, I have here for you. Go on up, Rosalie, this is your turn, your time. It's your time. It's yours, I know. Um, this is. Oh. Like you gotta. Signed by the entire. Go stand with them. Yeah, who knows how much of that any you all heard? But, um, this was signed by the entire caucus, the Black and Latino Legislative Caucus. Um, and also signed by the Chair, our friend Carlos Gonzalez, the gentleman from Springfield. And this is to honor your service to our country, to our public schools, to our city. So I'm so, so proud to be here and to recognize you.
Recording in progress.
Um, I just wanted to say that I love our school board.
Oh, well, hold on, get the microphone. Get the microphone. Hear you at home.
I just want to say that I love our school committee. Um, they are my family away from home. I love each and every one of them, and they are a true blessing to me. Um, we have a pretty solid board. Um, we have our own opinions, but we can agree to disagree. And I'm just very proud of them, and I love every one of them. And anything I could do for each and every one of our board members, I'm here for you. And thank you so much, sweetheart, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for letting me come here and honor Ms..
I get that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time to come here today. I know with the schedule and everything, it's been a bit crazy, but we finally were, you were able to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Rosalie.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome, that's quite the honor. Um, we're gonna go ahead and move, move on to, um, the student showcase. We have Peck School today.
Yes, we do. We are going to be, uh, I believe Ms. Cur-, uh, Robin Warner is on from Peck. Um, I was hoping that. And Sarita is there, okay, I s- I didn't see her on, I'm sorry. I was hoping that they can, uh, come off camera and just, uh, I know there's a, a video that we're gonna be showcasing. Um, but if they could just talk about what, what, uh, we're gonna be showing the committee and the audience, um, that would be great.
So I do see a comment here, it says Vanessa Kirby is as well, but doesn't have capability.
So Sarita is, are you gonna introduce the video or is someone else? Here, but I think.
I sure can, if you'd like me to.
Great.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Um, hello, hello. Uh, we have a, um, our lovely Ms. Kirby, um, did some featured artist interviews for a couple of our kiddos at Peck. So I'm gonna read a little blurb to y'all, if that's okay. Um, "The arts foster creativity, competence, and collaboration. The arts encourage students to see past right and wrong, to embrace mistakes as a valuable learning experience, to take creative risks, and to persevere. Consistently participating in our education program while in school is proven to strengthen mindfulness and reflection, a practice which can grow throughout an artist's life. At Peck School, we have an abundance of creative independent artists whose work explores identity, personal interests, activism, social justice causes, fantasies, and reality, just to name a few. Today, we're happy to present three artists who exemplify what it looks like to have a regular artistic presence. These three students not only worked tirelessly while in school, but outside of school, continue their artistic studies independently. I can vouch for that because they're always carrying around little notebooks and doodling all the time. These three artists have a prolific amount of work stretching years of focus and show no signs of slowing down. We're pleased to introduce you the artists Leleena Almodovar, Melanie Malone, and Sara Luce Martinez Rivera. Welcome, welcome, enjoy our video."
Hello, will you please introduce yourself to us, my dear?
My name is Leleena Almodovar, and I'm an eighth grader.
Wonderful. Uh, so you have a selection of work. Um, I'm very, very interested in this, wanna tell me a little bit about what we have?
Well, um, two of the artworks I have right now is, um, I made in your classes. This one.
Can we turn the volume on?
This is supposed to be like a lion, like more. Oh, different looking than the one you want me to make. And then after I made this one. I don't know when, but like was in your class.
Yeah.
And I guess we're trying to make something else. I drew this instead. I like drawing what I wanna draw randomly. And this one, I was at home, sitting on a couch, doing nothing, I just wanted to draw. I didn't know what I wanted to draw directly, so I just put my hand down, started making a circle, it didn't just went like that.
And then it turned into this remarkable skeletal, sort of, almost reminds me of like Day of the Dead celebration with the way the flowers are. But you have this sensibility for seeing your art for so long, and you have this really nice, sort of creepy aesthetic, right? Like with the lion, you interpret those lessons, right? We were trying to make like these realistic lions, you took it a whole other level, made it your own, which I'm always obsessed with, by the way. Um, right, you have this wonderful movement of your marks, same with the movement of this dragon. And now you also work digitally, all of these are pencil and ink. But talk to me just briefly about your digital artwork, how's that different for you?
It's different for me because of course I use my fingers instead of like a pencil. And, um, I just basically, um, draw random things, like sketches, then after I just do the lineup. And then I just create the whole.
The whole, the whole image as a whole, and you use a lot more color too when we're digital, I think, as well, right?
I like drawing on paper because like, not, I'm not like drawing color, because like, I usually tend to mess up when drawing on colored paper.
Colors are.
But on digital, you just rinse that, you just do it suddenly.
So a total different process, a little more freedom with that. Fantastic, well, I wanna say I'm so impressed with all of your work here, and you have such a clear theme with your work, right? They all, they go beautifully together, and I'm so happy that we got to share this with all of you. Awesome, thank you so much.
Awesome.
Hello, it's so nice to see you, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Sandy Sartenes, and I'm a sixth grader.
So you have a few pieces here to talk about, um, spread them out, and tell me a little bit about what we're looking at.
Okay, so this is Melanie and I see a lady, oh, oh, the girl, she's for a story that I've been working on. Uh, and yeah, I just wanted to make her look kind of like, you know, like those old photos where like, there's like someone important, and she's like.
Absolutely, like a woman, too.
Yeah, that's how I wanted to look, I wish I had darkened the hair a bit.
Okay.
Yeah, um, one of my favorite ones I've done, because I'm not really, uh, I'm pretty new to this. Okay, I don't do, I don't, uh, draw with a super brush.
Yeah.
So the fact that I was able to do that, it surprised me.
Yeah, totally, I can see that you're working towards that, which is excellent. And it has such true expression, right? I really can see that sense of loyalty in the way she's holding herself, you nailed that there. Um, talk to me more about these as well.
Okay, so this one, um, I, I, uh, I don't know, I was just kinda trying to do something kind of like for.
Sure.
Because I've always been like really interested in work since I was a really, really grown up.
Me too.
Uh, so like, like if you look at my sketches at home and stuff, like there's a lot of like porn and gore and stuff.
Yes.
And like my mom, like, was like, oh, don't. So, you know, but like I, I think this one like really kind of represents what I've been able to draw.
Absolutely.
Um, and like I'm really, uh, part of this, but the hands.
Absolutely, hands are so tricky, and you really captured that, absolutely. And I like how you're taking some of your own personal interests, right? That aura, that gore, right? And then adding it into your own very clear artistic style here, right? Like I can tell that these are made by you. Tell me, is there any other things that when you are creating? Are you doing it to relax, to get your mind off of things, just to explore, what do you think drives?
Usually, it's just like random inspiration, like I'll be like on Pinterest or something.
Okay.
Or like watching videos, like, oh, yeah, I wanna draw something, oh, yeah, I'm, I wanna draw now.
Right.
And so I start something, and like, I usually just have some videos before doing it, and so like I kind of just get carried away, because I, I just kind of start talking to myself, and so like I'm just like my own ballerina, and my mom sometimes wants me to like, where are you talking to? Are you on, on, on calling someone? Is it coming at all times? I'm like, no, 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 it's fine, it's fine.
It's my process, Mom, I'm working out my drawings.
Because I baby a lot, I tend to baby, so like I, sometimes I like to incorporate that, try to put that in my drawings.
I think that is such an excellent inspiration, and I can see that in your artwork, and I'm so happy that you shared that with all of us today. Thank you so much, Sara, you're rock star, these are so excellent. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Melanie Malone, and I'm an eighth grader.
Excellent, so Melanie, I'm very curious about some of the work that you have.
Yes, I've never actually shown you.
I know, I'm very excited to see them. So first, this piece, talk to me a little bit about what's happening.
Okay, most of the time, I don't draw things like this.
Sure.
And I'm not really used to it, but that specific, specific day, I was just like so emotional, so I just had to like burst my feelings out on something.
Absolutely, art is so good for that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, this is an abstract piece, it's a little different than the stuff I've seen you make in the past, but I think it's really powerful.
Yeah.
Color, the blending of your mark making.
Yeah, and I was actually very surprised that I could like blend some of those things together, because I don't, I'm not one to blend. I'm more just like, oh, that's gonna be that, and then everything else is gonna be the same.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then I do that, then I do it.
Excellent, so it's also a real, uh, example of experimentation, right?
Yes, it's also that, because I really don't do any of this, I don't.
That's a piece, well then, show me a piece that you feel like you do more often, and then you have others here, how about this piece? Can you talk about this?
This piece, okay, so I did this one yesterday.
Okay.
And it was actually like a redraw of a different piece, and it was when I first moved here. And I was like, oh, I'm so jealous, and I'm not gonna get any credit off of it, no kudos, because it was just. Hidden in my sketchbook, that was when I didn't like showing everybody my artwork, when I was scared about the feedback others would give me. But now I'm more con- confident, and I like to show my art now. So it's like, you know what, I'm gonna draw again, the style I have right now, and I'm gonna show it to people, because, you know. And it's more of an anime manga art style.
Absolutely.
Because that's what I like to draw most of the time.
And this also feels like it has a real sense of emotion as well, right? I can really get that vibe.
That's me. In this picture, I wanted to make him look anxious, nervous, like unsure of something.
Um, I'm super impressed with the way that you have your middle ground, right? You have all of your shadows, you've really brought forward a lot of those midtones.
Yes, that's what I tried, feel like the hair kind of like. The eye this time, love the other one, doesn't at all.
And you've cropped it in a very interesting way.
Yes, actually, the, um, I just washed it to like, you know, do it, but it actually ripped this whole entire part.
It happens sometimes with tape, right? It can be a little sticky, so I totally know.
The worst.
Been there, but in that, I also see that you drew this really lovely sketch of an eye on top of that, and the texture is. And that mistake actually kind of passed to it.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of like drawing this like whole little face right here, like, and I'm probably obviously gonna do it more later on, probably finish up on it. Like, it's just, I wanna add on to this little bit, I wanna make a whole face, probably something mad about it right here.
So that's lovely, you've taken something that was unintentional, maybe a mistake, and ran with it, you've made it your own, right? Isn't that such a nice thing about art?
Yes.
So like mistakes are.
Like mistakes can become good if you make it good.
Absolutely, right? You just not give up, which you clearly are not giving up, you have such an amazing amount of work in sketchbooks.
Yes.
So I know we have one more image, you wanna share that with us?
Yes, I'm excited.
Okay, I'm excited. All right, so talk to me about this, this is a lovely example of, of real planned out sketchbook.
Yes, okay, so during this time, I was like very confident in like my figures, and like me drawing bodies and like things. So these are basically just notes.
Yeah.
Of what I want to do when I draw a body.
Yeah.
And of course, it's not like, it's neither male, female type of body, it's just a normal, yeah, it's, it's normal. And like, I'm sure to know the different portions of it, like, you know, the calf, foot, thighs.
Human anatomy, yes.
It's, and it's also very difficult, I remember doing the side, you know, it was more easier, because I had a reference to it, obviously.
Absolutely.
Because if I have a reference, you can't do certain things.
Right.
So, and then there's the leg study, and that was very confusing, and it still is.
Yeah, li- and legs are very tricky, but I consider that you have anatomy studies for all the different parts, you've labeled everything.
Yes.
This is a beautiful example of a sketchbook.
Yeah.
All right, well, Melanie, thank you so much, this is fantastic, I am super impressed with all of your work, and I'm sure everyone else will be as well.
I hope they are.
They will be. Yay! Oh, girl, we've talked about your art forever, that was amazing, oh my God!
That was a really good presentation. Um, this is when you feel like, I wish they were here doing it, right? So we can actually get a, a full life experience. So I'm really hoping that we can start moving forward to that, because it's much different when you have it in person than when you're watching it on video. Um, but does anybody have any questions or comments? Ms. Burks?
I just thought it was amazing, the interaction, um, between teacher and student, but also the feedback that you gave to each and every one of them, and applauding their individuality was pretty amazing, so thank you for that.
Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I just wanna congratulate, uh, Leilani, Melanie, and Ciara Luce, and Ms. Kirby, that was, uh, amazing. Not, not too often do we get to see, um, our middle schools, uh, display their talents, um, in public. You know, we, we see our high schoolers and in their athletics, we see the drama club and the plays they put on. Uh, but this is, this was awesome to be able to showcase some of the good things that are happening in our middle schools and our talented middle school students, um, so happy that they were able to show their work, and you could just tell how proud they are of their work, and, and, um, the teacher did an amazing job with, with, with this video, so thank you and congratulations.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Um, we thank you guys, you did a great, great job. I think I am an artist, I cannot wait until I can get into the schools, so I can work with the children and show them the art and crafts that I can do. Thank you so much, and we really appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley-Williams, was there anyone else that had any comments or questions? Uh, one of the things that I was really happy to hear is, um, the question that, that was posed, um, to the second a student, where, do you do this, um, time, at, at a specific time? Is it, what brought you, what connected you to art? Was it, you know, maybe during anxiety or whatever the case is, a lot of students do look at art, and that's like their leeway or out um, for their emotions, so I was happy to, when I saw the third student come and that, um, that first picture um, that she did, that had a lot of emotion, that was a lot of impact right there. Um, and, you know, I applaud them, I'm hoping that that's something that they do continue into the, and, you know, as they grow older, because they truly do have a talent. Um, and I thank you for bringing it, hope, hopefully we can bring you guys back so we can actually see their artwork in person and hear from them especially. Thank you again. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move into, um, I know we had a public comment. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up, is there anyone else who signed up for public comment, comment, comment? Oh, it's been a long week. All right, so let me find, um, the public comment that was sent to, to us. Okay. Alrighty, so, this comes from Adriana Vazquez. It says, "I'm writing as a parent with a child in the Holyoke Public Schools. As I know you are aware, Massachusetts has lifted their mask mandate for students in schools. I understand they are leaving it to each district to decide on what is best for their community. I just wanted to reach out and let you know my thoughts. As a parent, I would appreciate you, the board, to please consider leaving this decision in the parents' hands and making masking in schools optional. I have heard the towns of East Hampton, Chicopee, Hadley, Westfield, South Hadley, and West Springfield have already moved on and removed the masking requirement. I have a first grader, I feel like this is a very imperative time in his learning. It would be wonderful if he could see what his teacher is saying and be able to see the proper pronunciations and expressions of his peers. We all know this is not a proper way for kids to get an education. Please allow these kids to see their teacher's smiling faces, the smile of their friends. Please let them get back to a regular normal. I feel we as a community have done our part, we have masked up, we have vaccinated, we have stayed home, we have stood six feet apart. Our community seems to be taking steps forward and thriving as we are hosting events that our city knows and loves without masking requirements or capacity limits. Why do our children not have the same options? I just asked my opinion as a parent, please be taken into consideration. I'm just a mom trying to raise my child in a normal world again. Thank you for your time, have a good night." Okay, so I, that's the only one that will go into record that was sent to us. Um, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh, our communications and reports, so if we can, um, hear from our student reps, um, Holyoke High School North.
Hello, I'm a representative from Holyoke High School, and I'll be discussing the report. Um, during the February vacation, we ran two programs, one of them being the Acceleration Academy, and it was basically a project based on learning with a focus on literacy. Forty-four students participated, thirty-three completed four-plus days, and students went all five days, earned two and a half credits. So it, um, gave them an extra course, or it allowed many of the juniors to not have to take an extra class next year. It was a great program. Another program was Credit Recovery Program, it ran as well. It was attendance buyback and earned credits for failing grades. There were sixty-seven students who participated in the Credit Recovery Program. Thirty students recovered credits for at least two classes, and many others completed at least one class. There was also the Honor Roll Recognition. There were HHS T-shirts for those who made honor roll for two terms, and then there were Ice Cream Send Days for those who made it for term two. We also have the two thousand and twenty-two musical, which would be based on Grease the Movie. It is very exciting that the musical is back this year, and it will be held at the end of April. There was also a junior-senior prom for March eighteenth, and it was an amazing time. Many of the juniors and seniors who went had an amazing time, and they could not stop talking about it in school. There was also an MCAS rally on Friday, that was a huge success. There were many tenth graders ready for the third, three MCAS takings, and they will take them this year, starting tomorrow with ELA. There will also be access testing celebration. It was held last Wednesday for a hundred and ninety students who took the access test. Also, for the winter sports, both boys and girls basketball teams made it to the state playoffs and Western Mass playoffs. That's it.
That was awesome, thank you so much. Uh, if we could hear from Holyoke High School Dean Campus.
Can you guys hear me? I hope you guys can hear me.
Hear and see you, Cheyenne.
Okay. Perfect, yes, hear and see me, okay. Good evening, everybody, I want to say thank you for having me today. Um, I'm gonna be going over a couple of updates that we have, and I hope that you guys, uh, happy to see me. And, uh, just wanted to let you guys know, if you guys have any questions, me and my fellow, uh, Vice President can answer any questions. Um, first up, I want to say about the sports update, um, at Holyoke, I mentioned, uh, boys' basketball and girls' basketball got all the way up to the state championships, I think, I think so. Uh, for sports updates, spring season started today, twenty-one students from Dean signed up for baseball. Two of the coaches happened to be from our building, uh, Mr. Rubus, he's our PE teacher, and Mr. Huard, who is our advanced maggie franchising teacher. Um, admissions update, two hundred and forty students have applied from multiple middle schools, including the seven of ours in Holyoke. That includes like four hundred eighth graders, and interviews happened to be placed today and throughout the whole entire week. Um, our current ninth grade students received slash place in their official SOBS. Um, the most top three were COV, Culinary, and Health Assisting, carpentry came close, um, they were kind of like, kind of there. Um, for fundraisers, our senior class sold, uh, ribbons with colors of the Ukraine flag, which proceeds went to support the impact. Uh, seniors also sold carnations, other classes continued to add to the fundraisers for their class. And my Vice President Kia will take over from here.
Hello, guys, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so my name is Horace Martinez, I'm the Vice President of Class two thousand and twenty-three, and I attend Dean. I'm the vice president of Class 2023, and I attend Dean. So we have been blessed with the opportunity to have shop field trips where each shop goes explores a place related to their shop, and they get to learn and understand how, what they learn at shop, they can use in the real life. So Carpentry visited the Carpentry Union for the day, and Auto Collision and Deal and Diesel were invited to Gary Rome for a visit to meet with the top mechanic. So all students were excited to be there, and they came back with great like news. And I feel like now they're even more ready to learn. So that was a very great opportunity for us. And also with the A-B schedule change, we get more classes and more electives. So I think that's great. For eleventh and twelfth, now we have Spanish, marketing, and internship, pre-calculus, and internships, internal internships. So you can help out in shop, school leadership, academics, office. It's a great way to help children be more engaged in the school building. This will be starting next year. There was also PE electives, like competitive sports and lifelong fitness, yoga, for instance. Or like if you want to focus on one sport only, you can do that. Now there will be a possibility as an elective. So also for ninth and 10th grade, there will be college and career readiness, financial literacy, employability skills, technology platforms, and academic crosswalks, ELA, math. And then, so 10th grades will take the ELA MCAS starting tomorrow and Wednesday. We have witnessed them working hard to prepare, and we're confident in them. And that would be all.
That is awesome. I am so happy to hear from our student reps. You have no idea. I do want you guys to know, though, that during the meeting, as whatever is being talked about, please, if you have any comment, questions, you need clarification, because you guys are on Zoom, just use the raise hand icon and definitely ask your questions, your input. That's why we're here. We're here for you guys, right? And we're here to support you. So the only way that we can improve our district and improve our education here in Holyoke can be the top place for students to be is because we have you guys speaking up. And thank you for being here. So we're gonna go ahead and move on. Sorry, I gotta keep going back and forth. I'm looking at the agenda here. We're gonna go ahead and move to our next agenda item, which is superintendent-receiver reports. So I pass this whole section on to you, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, we have a few things that we wanted to bring to the school committee. You know, a lesson learned from me last year was around the program of study and any changes to course offerings that we have. I heard from the school committee that they would like to see those things in advance. So today, I have both high school principals here and Valerie Aneer, who I would appreciate if they came off camera to talk about changes to the program of study for next year, which I know at the Holyoke High North Campus, there are none. And I also brought to this committee end-of-year events. The theme really is like, we're going back to a traditional year. Traditional, you know, we just heard from our student reps about an MCAS rally, about the junior prom. And we're really looking to have that traditional year feeling. So I wanted the principals to talk about some of the events that we have upcoming for the seniors. So we will start with, in the order of agenda, Sam, which one, what was first? I think I had the program of study, which was Dean. Is that right? So could we back up, back up the slides? Okay, why don't, if that's the order, go back to number five, sorry, slide number five. All right, next slide, thank you. And this is Holyoke High Senior Events. Lori, take it away.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Just want to start out by saying thanks to Jake Ali for getting here tonight. She literally was at softball tryouts till about 5:30, went home and showered and got on here. So thanks to Jake Ali for representing North. Just want to share with you the plans that we have for our senior events this year. In January, we started to do some planning once we knew that there was the potential to go back to having some as-normal activities. And so a team got together, made up of the senior class officers, the senior class advisor, as well as the junior class advisor, and some members of the administrative team to decide what the events were gonna be for the end of the year. I have to say, as Jake Ali said, we had our junior-senior prom on Friday night, and it was awesome. Like, for kids to be able to be there and have a social event, you could tell it kind of, kids were feeling like there was a sense of normalcy, even though, you know, we've been in school for some time. But getting back to those social events, that's what high school is all about. It's as much about the social events as it is about the academics. So it was really great to see kids to be able to have that opportunity. What we have planned is May twenty-fifth to May twenty-seventh, seniors will be taking their finals and be complete with everything that they need to do by the end of day on May twenty-seventh. May twenty-seventh will be our senior night. What our senior night is, is the senior class votes on a theme and kind of just has a night where they come to the cafeteria decorated in some kind of theme. They give out the class celebrities. They have the opportunity to sign yearbooks. May thirty-first, we will have a senior breakfast and an assembly. This is usually where we do announce our class rank and celebrate students in the class for different recognitions that we want to point out. June first will be graduation rehearsal and the prom. So the senior prom will be at Wycoff this year. June third will be our traditional class day, where students kind of have the chance to like reflect on their last four years. Do, they do different things such as reflect on their history. Students are recognized for both their athletics and their academic accomplishments, as well as get some scholarships. And our graduation will be on June fifth. It's on a Sunday. We're going to move the time from one o'clock to twelve o'clock, and hopefully that one hour will be a little difference and not be as hot and not be in the rain before, it tends to rain a little bit later in the afternoon. And we're just excited to be able to, be able to have a sense of normalcy and allow the seniors to have these times of celebrations that are really times, I think, that we all think about, our time in high school. These were all things that we remembered, and I'm excited to be able to work with our students to get back these things that they're gonna remember forever.
Thank you, Lori. Piece of advice, print out your speech, don't use your iPad. All right, next slide. Unless anybody has any questions on that, we're gonna move to the Dean Senior Events. Al Gates?
Thanks, Anthony, and congratulations, Ms. Tensley-Williams. And also, Mr. Callanmore, thanks for coming by the other day. It was great seeing you in the building and nice work, PEC students, for your presentations. And shout out to Cheyenne and Kyo. Appreciate you and the prep that you do for tonight's meeting. So our senior event dates, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth will be our senior finals, followed by our class day, which will be on May twenty-fifth. That'll be on the Dean Campus. May twenty-sixth, our senior prom will be at the Wycoff Country Club. May thirty-first, senior night, which will be held at Dean. June first will be our senior breakfast and graduation rehearsal. And June second, graduation at Dean, 5:30 PM. The senior class is requesting to be outside. I'm not sure how feasible that will be, but there's been a lot of updates to the gym. So, you know, that's a space that we're ready to use if outside will not work. You know, involved in this are our senior advisors, class officers, our ambassadors, our student government. And they do surveys with a small number of seniors, so right around ninety, a little under ninety, who get to have voice in that. And then, I mean, we receive the information, but we're still part of the team. And we happen to have someone one night in the building who'll advocate to keep some of the traditions and histories alive as we move forward.
Al, any questions on?
Yeah, I have Mr. Wellhand.
Thank you. I think last year, the graduation for Dean was on a Friday night. It looks like it's on a Thursday night. Is there any reasoning behind that?
Al, can you speak to that?
So, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just asking if you could speak to that, why the change from Friday to Thursday.
Yeah, the students had talked about, a lot of our students have other family members and people that are graduating, I think, on Friday nights and Saturdays. And students talked about being able to wake up during the week on a Friday as a graduate. So nothing, there was no, I think, kind of big rationale behind it. That was, but also like Thursday worked for the flow of the week. So the, you know, the senior team had put this together, and there were no objections to that. I mean.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? I'm excited.
Great, thank you. Next slide, I believe would be the program of study updates.
All right, I think Kyo kind of took away the majority of this. But just to, you know, reemphasize, because of the A-B schedule, it really opens up some opportunities with the students now adding a couple of classes to the electives in ninth and 10th grade. Not really a lot of room in ninth, 10th grade, our current schedule, but we will add the college and career readiness, one and two. It's a two-year scope and sequence, but it's gonna be the first year of offering it. This will include the academic crosswalks. It'll include employability and our technical skills. Sorry, my son is looking to go play. But the college and career readiness will be for ninth and 10th grade. And then eleventh and twelfth grade, marketing and entrepreneurship will be offered, as well as Spanish one for next year. And then for the juniors, they'll be able to take Spanish two as seniors. And also, you know, we've run, started a newspaper during the pandemic, and it's very popular. And we, when we polled the students, they were very interested in taking a journalism class as an elective. So a journalism class will still cover the ELA frameworks, but students will be able to produce a newspaper as well. So, and then, I don't know if I missed anything. I don't have the presentation break for me. College, oh, pre-calculus physics. I know pre-calculus was a course this year that our seniors. We're doing financial literacy and prom and stats. And pre-calculus requested many students. And being able to offer physics as well, we have some students who have been taking like chemistry, anatomy the last couple of years and have showed some interest in taking physics. So over the course of the next couple of weeks, as students choose their electives, we'll know kind of what's gonna run. But this is what's on the table based on student voice.
Great, thank you, Al. And again, that's just, we didn't have any changes in our program of study at the North Campus. So there's nothing really to share, but these were some of the exciting changes we have at Dean that the A-B schedule allowed us to make.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
I think it's really wonderful that Spanish is being offered, you know, at the Dean Campus. I think it adds a wealth of opportunity to our students, even to have a basic understanding of the language, no matter what the field they go into.
Thank you. Ms. Felicia Sims?
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing. You know, we hear some great things going on. I also want to say like the whole Spanish, I absolutely love. Can we throw in ASL, you know? I was just saying, you know, we were talking about this, about American Sign Language, and it's such a, such a huge language among our community, also within our families. And the funny thing is, is that right now, there's such a shortage of trilinguals, Spanish speakers and American Sign Language. So, hey, can you put that on? They make a hundred and twenty dollars an hour as a clumsy old kid. Great job for any young kid.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we can take that, that feedback. We appreciate it. I know that, you know, we have a lot of initiatives, and the principals are in the middle of developing their budgets. But they certainly appreciate that feedback. I don't know, you know, as Student Opportunity Act revenues come in and grows principals' budgets, they may have the opportunity in the future to start adding things like that.
I just think it was a great opportunity, like, again, like you said, I know you guys are doing amazing right now, and you know, you're on the right path, especially in your health department. It's such a big need across, to have interpreters across the board in the health department. I mean, you have to be a licensed medical interpreter in Spanish, ASL, and any other language or as a caseworker or something like that. But I just wanted to throw it out there, but you guys are doing a great job.
You know, I couldn't agree more with Ms. Felicia Sims, even nurses. You know, that's something that I want to take as well. How do we communicate with our patients that are hard of hearing through ASL? It's very rare that you're gonna find a nurse that is able to communicate with some through, with someone through ASL. So if they're living in the community, really can't communicate unless you're writing it, and that's if they can read and write as well. So, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I just want to thank Mr. Gates for all that he does for those kids, for the students. He has a big heart, and we really appreciate the hard work that you put into caring for the students at Dean. Thank you so much, Mr. Gates.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Can I just add one more thing?
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
I just wanted to recognize the fact that sixty-seven students did participate in credit recovery at Holyoke High School North, which I think is an outstanding number and should be recognized, not just for the students, but also for the teachers who put in their time during that vacation week to support our students, and they should be recognized as well. The staff, the administration, everyone who came together to do that work for our students.
Thank you.
All right, next, thank you so much for the principals and Valerie for helping put this together.
I do have Jacy Lee Santos, right? Did I say it right? She has her hand raised. Our student rep, you can go ahead.
Hello. Yes, I just wanted to say that I agree with the amount of students who participated in credit recovery because when they came back, they would not stop talking about it. The teachers felt engaged with their students, and the students themselves felt like they were more focused after vacation to continue learning and being educated so they can go on with, like, the education in a way, so they could keep going on. And it was just an amazing program overall. I have friends who continue to talk about it and say, "We recovered credits." And I just feel more focused in school, and it was just a great program overall.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. The next part of the agenda is, I know that, I think there were, there was a comment made about, you know, monitoring progress quarterly. I did share with the school committee earlier this month an update to our quarter-two process. So what we, and then I also shared, you know, an update on all of our annual planning. So we established like big target goals at the beginning of the year. And then on a quarterly basis, we provide the school committee and the state an update on where we're at with those projects, as well as we do school improvement plan quarterly reviews. We've had SEN reviews done. But I really was just trying to see if we could take the opportunity to see if anybody had feedback on that process, if there's ways we could improve it. But it really was just about, I shared the Q2 update and looking to see if there's any feedback from any of the school committee members on that process.
Anybody? Okay, Ms. Wilson.
I know in one of our packets, and I'm not sure if this was included in the report, was the official accountability report for our school with the numbers. And I'm not sure. And I'm not sure if that was just for the school committees viewing or if that's going to be reviewed at any point.
If you received it in your packet, it was for, for your, are you talking about the, there was, uh, there was one specifically for Morgan that the state does, since Morgan is under receivership separately from the district, they have to report to the board of D E S I on quarterly progress at Morgan. So, they just give a broad update about what's going on at Morgan. The, the memo that I'm referring to, and I think this is on the agenda for later, after my presentation, the Morgan one, is, is an email that would have come from Sam and it was a memo addressed to the school committee and it, and it showed like where we're at with our high-level projects and the systems in place that we have to monitor progress on a quarterly basis.
Any, any other question, Ms. Wilson or? Ms. Burks?
So, I do have questions on that, but I guess I'm going to have to email them to you. I will say that it's really, really hard to not have this stuff like in paper so we can write down notes and address it all. Trying to shoot between that email, tonight's agenda email is just really difficult. And I know that, that we've asked previously, but we need this stuff so we're able to take notes and ask really good questions and we be prepared. And this makes it so you really can't be because you have to try to go back through that email in a short amount of time, so we're not delaying the meeting to figure out exactly all the pieces that we had questions on. So, that just makes it really hard where if we had it in print, we would have the notes and be ready.
So, so thank you for that. This is a question about the process, so we provide you with that quarterly update. It's not an agenda topic to, to discuss unless someone asks to talk about that memo. I'm asking about the process itself. So, are you saying that you would prefer that it be printed and mailed to your house? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. You can, you can just email any questions you have, for sure.
So, I do know for the packets for this week, the printer system did go down. Only one was able to be printed. And that would be yours, Mr. Collmore. So, you didn't get one. Oh, oh, you did get one? Oh, okay. But Mr. Collmore's, and so I did tell Sam, you know, the printer's down. At least we have our computers, we can go ahead and, you know, look at our agenda from our computer. I know Jay typically prints elsewhere sometimes, but hopefully we can start getting our packets because I do agree, it's much easier to have it. I know I'm going through my phone and just looking at the agenda to know where I'm at for the next one. But if we can start getting the packets, so we can write our notes, I know I have like ten, maybe fifteen boxes at home with all of my meeting minutes, all of my meeting packets since I got elected. Because it's good, we can always go back to it, so.
Okay, so this is, all right, now I better understand. It sounds like you would actually like this to be a part of your school committee packet. Because this was not a part of the school committee packet, this was emailed to you guys separately like a couple of weeks ago. Okay. Or a week and a half ago or whatever that. So, you would prefer that it be a part of the school committee packet, we could make that happen. And those get printed and sent to you guys ahead of time anyways. Good. All right. That's helpful. Yeah. That makes sense. Yeah, I will say the first quarter update was included in the packet and I didn't get any questions on that. The second one. You haven't been getting packets for months? Okay, we can.
We got them last month. I swear I got, I swear I had a packet last month. Yeah, we did get our packets last month. You, you came with it. Last month.
Well, I, I'm, I appreciate this feedback. So, like, the first quarter update that we did, we included in the packet, it was printed. The, this time around, that didn't work, us sending it to you guys separately. I feel like I was a little rushed to make sure you got the update. So, in reflection, I know like Anthony, don't rush, just make sure you get it as part of the school committee packet to them. So, we'll, we'll definitely take that feedback and, 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 and make that change for sure.
Mr. Collmore?
Is it possible, and I, I know your schedule is things like this, but we, we used to get it on a Thursday packet so that we could read it over, over the weekend and be prepared for a Monday night's meeting. Is that possible for you to, to get, to pack it out on a Thursday?
Yeah, I mean, we've been doing it on Fridays, but we could change it to Thursdays. Yeah, we would just have to adjust our practice and our deadlines internally.
Well, the reason I'm saying is, I got this packet three o'clock this afternoon, okay? But sometimes it's in my mailbox at, on a Saturday or Sunday even. And I'd like to be able to read, read my packet and make notes and things to discuss here at the meeting and not, and not get it at three o'clock on a Monday afternoon.
Yep. I agree with you. We'll, we'll make sure that we adjust our timeline so that you're getting it, should be getting it.
Can I make a motion then that, that we table this and we can actually ta, uh, look it over and we can speak to it at our next meeting? If we have any concerns?
Okay, so you're putting it in motion. I was actually going to call on Ms. Tensley Williams, but, okay. So, you're asking for a motion to table what?
To, um, so, so we can review this information, have the information in front of us for
The process?
The, your quarterly update?
No, it's, it's the process.
This is just, you, you already giving me feedback on the process, which is super helpful.
Okay.
That's what, that's what the agenda item was, is the quarterly review process. If we're going to bring in, so, one of the things is, like, the quarterly review. If there's areas that we want in our meetings, because this is an ongoing, this is not something that you get it one month and it's done.
Oh, no, right.
Something that we can always come back and question and see how we're, how we're doing, there's sections of it. So, it's like a book that you always want to keep at your side and say, let's talk about this, how are we improving? Because at the end of the day, the goal is to ensure that our students are, are meeting their educational, their educational goals, right? So, improving the education here in the city of Holyoke. But this agenda item was just about the process of it and how it got out to us, which was through email or the timing. So, now we're giving the feedback on that. So, yes, we do want to have the packets, again, because it's easier for us for note-taking. And include in there the quarterly review. That's submitted by the state or whatever, or even by, by you guys. Basically, that's, it's kind of, and by the way, in the office, did we get these books? So, for our next meeting, if all of our, our school committee members could please have this book, they should have this each time that the, the M A S C, we do pay for these and it's part of our membership. Ms. Tensley Williams?
Sometimes things happen, things come up beyond our control. And I'm sure in the future, we will, we will be getting our packets. But I knew when we didn't get them, something had happened and I didn't know what. But I knew that we would get them and I, I agree with the group that we do need the packets and we need them on time. But things do come up sometimes that we don't foresee. And so, I believe this time we can forgive it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your forgiveness.
There any other questions, comments? I know you were going to say something, Ms. Burks.
Well, the only other thing, seeing how we're talking about the packets, like, is there any way possible, like, so when you guys do the slides, that the actual slides also be in our packets?
That I can't, no. I just won't have enough time to do it. I ask everybody to have everything done by Thursday and I'm working on the presentation itself over the weekend. So, I try to take everything that's in the packet and prepare a presentation. I don't want to, I'm, I'm not going to set myself up for like unrealistic expectations. I'm not, I, I just, that's not something that I could do.
This, that's just for you to, to like speak on of whatever that's in the pocket.
Right, it's me taking the packet.
I'm like the PowerPoint stuff, there's been the, that's come up that we don't have. Yeah. Even after the meeting, that'd be great.
What are you, what are you saying after?
Like the slides, if we could get them even after the meeting.
Oh, of course, yeah, we could certainly submit the slides afterwards, for sure. It's just, realistically, what I'm doing over the weekend is, is reviewing the whole packet in detail and then making sure that I put together a presentation to try to get these meetings under an hour. Ha, 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 ha.
Sorry, you should have, you shouldn't have then just went through your whole weekend doing that. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to the next agenda item.
Uh, the next agenda item is just a COVID update and masking update. And thank you for that parent that, that gave us the, the, the public speak-out. Because this is a great transition to what we're going to be talking about tonight. So, so far, there's been a hundred and twenty-one days of school and we've had a lot of cases throughout the year. Especially this past, a, a couple of months ago when we saw a spike and cases were really, really tough. But we have been working with the Board of Health and monitoring data on a weekly basis and things are looking good. Things have gotten extremely better compared to where we were, you know, a couple of months ago. Here you can see on the next slide, we show cases by month. And you can see that in the month of March, we've had a total of sixteen cases compared to February, which was a hundred and forty-five cases and in January, there was eight hundred and seven cases. So, you could see that, that steady decline in cases. You know, and that spike that hit with, with the holidays and, and the variant that, that, that just had COVID, you know, running rampant throughout the community. Next slide, we have continued to partner with the Holyoke Health Center. Actually, this slide is on our, all right, I'm trying to follow you. Next slide, please, thank you. We have been partnering with the Holyoke Health Center and, and continue to lag behind the state in terms of our vaccination rates. You can see that just over half of Holyoke's children and teens, ages five ni, five nineteen, received their first COVID vaccine compared to seventy-five percent. So, we're around fifty percent and the state average is seventy-five percent for that age demographic. And about forty-five percent of Holyoke's children and teens, between the ages of five and nineteen, are fully vaccinated, which is about twenty percent less than the state average, but it's still almost half of our students. Here you can see a, a quick snapshot of our percent positivity rate. You can see that back in February was about nine point one-four percent and we were averaging about sixty cases per one hundred thousand, uh, uh, in terms of a daily incident rate. And you could just see a steady decline in February, those two data points got better. In March, they got even better and then you can see where we're at as of last week. We're at one point seven, seven percent positivity rate and an average daily incidence rate of seven point four. All this to say that like things have gotten better. You know, when we were here, at the last school committee meeting, we made the decision, or I heard your, your recommendation to agree with what I was thinking in terms of keeping the mask mandate in place. You saw that we surveyed our families and we surveyed our staff and it was mixed. You know, fifty-five percent of them at the time wanted to keep masks on, but there were still forty-five percent of them that wanted masks off. And so, what I had committed to the community and what I had committed to, to this body here is that we would revisit this on March twenty-first and here we are, March twenty-first, and we're revisiting it. You can see here, we, we have been monitoring those communities that have lifted the mask mandate. So, you can see in Chicopee, South Hadley, West Springfield, Westfield, Agawam, Granby and Long Meadow. One of the things that I was keeping a close eye on with my team and with the, with the Board of Health is, is what's going to happen when these communities lift their masks? Like, are they going to see an increase in cases? And that hasn't been the case. You can see in Chicopee, they've lifted their mask mandate effective February twenty-eighth and they had twenty cases that week, which was a decrease from the week before. They had a twenty the following week and then this past week thirteen. So, there's no indication that lifting the mask mandate is going to increase the number of cases based on the information we're seeing in these communities. South Hadley also did it and they haven't had cases. West Springfield, they were one of the districts that did it right on February twenty-eighth. You could see they went from twenty-nine cases to thirteen cases and a little, a slight uptick of, up to seventeen cases. Westfield, another community, fifteen cases, zero cases and three cases. All this to say that I am strongly considering lifting the mask mandate and making it optional to families and making that effective March twenty-eighth, which is a week from today. And I am, you know, I'm hoping that, that I have the support of, of this body and would, would certainly entertain a motion to agree with that recommendation or to, to recommend that I make a decision on this. But we have been working with the Board of Health, we have been monitoring this data and I think that we as a community are ready to, to lift the mask mandate in our schools.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Burks?
So, I guess I'm a little perplexed by waiting until the twenty-eighth, only because yesterday, record numbers came to the city and people weren't wearing masks. Kids aren't wearing masks. We have parents that are asking on both sides, which is understandable, which I kind of feel like we, we should listen and give people the option. And like, the city is unmasked, central office is unmasked. And we're asking our teachers and our students to stay masked. It's just like, I kind of feel like if it's, we're in, we're all in. So, like, if we're saying that, then central office should be masking as well. We're asking our schools to do it. It's a school department decision. Masks should be worn at central office if we're asking all of our schools to do it. So, I, I think that we need to be respectful of families and I think that we should. I, I just, I guess I'm, I, I don't understand, like, we have the city going around maskless. We had the parade yesterday with thousands of people with no masks.
Yeah.
I think Mildred and Gustavo were the only two people I really saw with masks.
And you'll continue wa, seeing me with a mask.
No, and I get that and I appreciate that, but I also appreciate that families are saying and parents are saying, let us make our own decisions. And I think, and, and, and teachers as well, you know, some teachers want to stay masked and I think we should support that. And the ones that don't, I think we should support them too, is what I'm saying. I don't think it's, I, I just don't think it's fair to go another week. And I think it's wrong that we ask our students and our teachers and all of our H P S. that we ask our students and our teachers and all of our HPS other staff to stay masked, but yet Central Office isn't, that's wrong.
I just have to respectfully disagree, Becky, um, Ms. Burks. Uh, this isn't my opinion, this isn't your opinion. I surveyed our families and I surveyed our staffs, and I made a decision based on those survey results. So we could all think what we want, and we could all think what we think is best, but I asked our families and I asked our staff, and the majority of them said that they did not feel comfortable yet lifting the mask mandate, and that's, that's how I made my decision. And for me to say, let's lift it and let everybody know tomorrow, I just think that's a complete injustice to allowing, to, to letting our families know that this is coming so that they can make, so that they can talk to their kids and let them know what to expect so that schools can start talking about how they're gonna start, how, how they're, how they're gonna take this. We could make the, you know, you could make a recommendation today, and then all of a sudden, uh, uh, we, we implement it tomorrow. I just don't think that's fair to our families.
But we said at the last meeting, you said that the decision was gonna be revisited on the twenty-first. So parents that, and families have been paying attention, waiting for tonight's meeting.
Yep.
Um, to try to, to figure that out, to know how to move forward with their kids. So I don't think it's completely unexpected or pulling a rug. I mean, that was out there, that it was gonna be revisited on this date. A lot of our teachers are begging to be able to have their students see them speak.
Yeah.
And so in the language, just as that mother explained, like, our teachers are asking for that. Um, so I just think, like, we said at the last meeting, it was gonna be revisited tonight. People are waiting for that information to get out there. I just think it's wrong. And again, I don't think it's fair that Central Office is not masked, but we're asking that of our teacher and our students.
And, and I just respectfully disagree. We, so we surveyed our families and parents, and we were okay in, in Central Office. We wanted to also test out to see, like, if we lift the mask mandate, are we gonna see a spike in cases? Let's help, let's look at what's going on in the, in other communities. Let's look at what would happen if we lifted the mask mandate in Central Office, and we use that to inform the recommendation that, that I, you know, that I'm leaning towards, uh, which is lifting it, uh, March twenty-eighth.
Mr. Collmore?
Yeah, uh, I, excuse me, I'd like to go on the recommendation. And a mo- this is a motion on a recommendation of the receiver that we, uh, agree with his recommendation.
So I have a motion from Mr. Collmore, um, for the school committee to agree with the recommendation, um, to lift the mask mandate effective March twenty-eighth. That's the motion?
Excuse me, can he read that, his motion again, that he wants?
I, so, I'm, based on all of the information that I'm seeing, I'm ready to lift the mask mandate, and I wanna give our families an opportunity to, to...
I'll second that motion on Mr. Collmore.
To know that this change is coming.
Okay, so point of order for right now, okay, one moment. I understand, we have somebody with their hands up. Right now, I have somebody who has a motion. At that time, it stops all hands up.
Oh.
Until we figure out that's the motion that you want, Mr. Collmore? Okay, now do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a second. Is there any discussion? Now I see the hand up, but I also know that I had a hand up over here too. So Ms. Wilson, after Ms. Wilson, it'll be Mayor Garcia. After Mayor Garcia, it'll be you, Ms. Tensley-Williams, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, go ahead.
So I would just like to say thank you for revisiting the numbers. I think, um, you know, you are seeing that there is the decline, and I know our, our teachers are, some of our, and I can't say all of them, because, you know, some will choose to continue to wear the mask, but, um, many teachers, um, many families, um, students that I have seen and spoken with, um, you know, really are dying to get back to that sense of normalcy. I had the pleasure of experiencing it myself. When, um, I did walk into where I work and I did not know there was the change. It was an overnight decision that I was not aware of. Um, I recognize that you do wanna give that notice to families in case there are some people who do have concerns. Um, so I, I, I can recognize that, um, that you're being respectful to those families, but also to those teachers of how are they going to feel if they're concerned and if they're in a small class size? You know, without some of their students, or maybe all of their students not wearing masks, and how would they approach it from that perspective as well?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, Mr. uh, Mayor Garcia, I'm sorry.
Hey, Soto, I do, I really do appreciate you sharing the, uh, the matrix there. It's very helpful to see that and know where we stand comparatively to other communities on this particular issue. And very happy to see, um, Holyoke has been in a consistent, positive direction, uh, forward on this. Um, I know that the last time we met, and, and, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna support, you know, whatever recommendation you have, I think it's important for us as a body to stay consistent and aligned, um, uh, with our superintendent, and I'm just very grateful to know that there's an actual date, um, uh, very nearby, uh, to, to lifting. I know the last time we met and we talked about this, um, we did realize that although it was majority, it was fifty-five percent, and there, there could have been a, a margin there of potential error because, you know, some folks, um, there was no question in the survey that said anything about if things showed much more, to be mu- uh, much more positive, uh, can we have potentially lift it sooner? Um, so I guess, I don't know, my question is, uh, Mr. Soto, if, 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 if there isn't even an ounce of possibility, we can potentially lift it earlier on a Wednesday or Thursday? If not, like I said, like, if you're strong on Monday, I'm good, I'm gonna support this motion. I just, knowing that was the conversation last time, if whether or not it's reasonable, um, uh, to, uh, or, or any, uh, potential to, to lift it Wednesday or Thursday. To give you that time to, to do your outreach, to communicate to the, to the, to the staff and, and to families.
I'm just gonna go ahead and, and call on Ms. Tensley-Williams, and then we'll go back to, to your, to your question, Mayor. I know we're gonna try to get to your question real quick.
Um, I have no disrespect to anyone on our committee. Um, numbers count, and we can say, oh, all the teachers... Is there a way you can get a number of all the teachers and what they're saying, Mr. Soto? This way here, we have an idea of how many teachers is for it and how many teachers are not for it. And numbers do count. So, you know, I can just throw something out and say, all the parents don't want it or whatever. How many parents? Uh, you know, not that we're trying to single people out and take names, but I'm saying, numbers count. And if we have X amount of teachers that say no, then we have X amount of teachers that say yes. That's, I think, how we need to do it. If, if you can, if that's possible.
Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you, um, thank you, um, Mr. Soto for looking at this again. Um, I mean, for two years, we've heard, you know, foul the science. You know, if I heard that once, I heard it a million times. Now we're following the survey. I mean, you just kinda showed us what the stats are. You know, they're kinda proof in the pudding right there. I appreciate you coming to, with the date, you know, whether it's Friday or Monday. I support that decision, okay? Just, a- a- as the mayor said, you know, just having a firm date in hand would be helpful to all the parties. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna say something real quick, 'cause I know Mayor Garcia is waiting for, to hear back from Mr. Soto. So for someone who will be continuing wearing a mask, right? Um, what I am gonna say is, like I had told, uh, Mr. Soto, I get it, lift the mask mandate, right? Technically, it should be in the parents' hands to make that decision. I just hope that also for the older students, 'cause I do recall our student rep that was here, she herself said, I'm gonna continue wearing a mask, right, for my safety. Though we are listening to our children, um, you know. And I also hope that those that do come with masks do not get picked on or be looked at different. You know, there's a reason why we, we wanna wear a mask. Me, you have no idea where I was at before coming here. You have no idea if I'm sitting right here telling you that I'm feeling great, and actually, I, I may be COVID positive. So you should be happy that I have my mask on, right? You don't know who you're next to. The other reason why I think the twenty-eighth is good? How would you like it if there was a meeting right now? And even though you may have, may have known that it was gonna happen today, that all of a sudden, at eleven o'clock at night, now you have a thing that says, the decision has been changed, is this as of tomorrow morning? Not all parents are aware that this decision was being made today. You were right, there were many people this weekend here with no masks from all over. And like I told you just now, you don't know if I'm COVID positive. We don't know who was there either, or who we were hanging around with, or anything, and they were all maskless. So having this week to prepare as well, our maintenance staff to know the cleaning procedure, figure out how we can implement the social distancing and making sure, just because we're going maskless, we still have to maintain infection control protocols, right? And also talking to the students to let them, letting them know, give them that respect and give the families the respect as well. So giving them this time, and at the same time, we, if anybody turns out positive, then they do. But within five days, like they say, in five days, all of a sudden, you're cured. Um, by that time, it's already next week. They don't even have it anymore, right? So I think that is like the best decision, but again, that is up to Mr. Soto. We can take the motion, um, but I know that he was gonna answer to Mayor Garcia.
Yeah, so to Ms. Tensley-Williams, we did provide, we did survey our families, and that's why we decided, and I, I reviewed the language, it says, we're gonna hold the mask mandate through the month of March, and, and that we will revisit the conversation on the twenty-first. It doesn't, I had no intentions on, like, making decision on the twenty-first, but revisiting it and kinda gauging where you all are at. So I appreciate all your comments, because it lets me know where you as a body and commu- uh, uh, feel about this. And then, um, to Mayor Garcia, I, I, I would be open to doing it sooner, uh, but not, not sooner than I'm comfortable, like, making sure we get the message out. So my decision to, to recommend the twenty-eighth was in collaboration with our local Board of Health, in collaboration with our nursing team, in collaboration with, uh, the, the P, like, other members at the Board of Health as well. And, and they had recommended that they thought it was a good idea for, you know, because of the St. Patrick's Parade, to, uh, get the information out to families, um, and give them enough time to adjust. Uh, but I would, I could certainly, um, if, if the motion being made would be to, to say either on the twenty-eighth or sooner, if, if, if possible, um, I could certainly take that information back. Uh, we could schedule a, a special meeting with, uh, Sean Goncalves and his team, and we could make sure we get our communication out, and I feel, if I feel comfortable doing it on Friday, I feel like it would be no earlier than Thursday, 'cause we need time, um, to, to communicate out to families and let them know this is coming. Let them know, let principals talk to their staff, and, um, I feel like we need that time and that, that communication to happen. So I, I would be open to it for sure. Um, I just, uh, I wanna make sure that, that it's communicated well. Just like, you know, just like, uh, the decision we made in, in, in March was, was, people had enough time to think about that and process it, and I wanna make sure, you know, we, we respect that as well.
So the motion that we have is just to, for the recommendation for March twenty-eighth. That's what you originally put out there, Mr. Collmore, that was seconded. So we're gonna take a vote on that. Now, if it doesn't pass, because it's a definitive with March twenty-eighth and it's, they're, it's not amended unless somebody amends it to say, or sooner if possible, which I haven't heard yet anybody amend it. Oh.
And the maker of the mo- his own...
I was gonna say, can...
Motion?
Can we, can anyone make that?
Or the maker of, of the motion, if he wants to, if he wants to amend it.
So I'd like to make the amendment, um, be that, uh, based upon, uh, Mr. Soto's discussion, that, but the latest would be the twenty-eighth. The earliest could possibly be Thursday, this Thursday, based upon recommendations, um, from the Board of Health and Communication to all affected, uh, personnel and families.
That's really long, Ellie, but... I mean, the, the whole part of, or sooner if possible was the first.
Or sooner if possible. I'll amend my amendment, the twenty-eighth or sooner if possible.
All right, that'll work. Okay, so now we have an amended motion by Ms. Wilson.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second, um, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously, uh, the school committee does agree with the receiver superintendent, um, to lift the mask mandate, um, as of March twenty-eighth or sooner if possible. And that ends that agenda item.
That ends the superintendent's update. So thank you all for your, your feedback, that's important in, in making a decision like this, uh, because it impacts all of our families, all of our students, and all of our staff. So, um, as I've been committed to this entire time, I want, I want to work with all of you as partners in, in, um, in some of these tough decisions that we have to make.
And I do wanna say, I just noticed something in the chat, and I truly wanna a- apologize to Ms. Santos, our student rep. If I would've seen this, or if I would've noticed that you had your hand raised, I would've definitely called upon you. But I am gonna read real quickly what she wrote here. Uh, she says, I respectfully agree, we sit in a room of thirty students with many desks in one classroom. We may not know who has it. One sneeze can contaminate those thirty students, and they will be out for at least five days. That's a lot of work to make up and may be stressful for those kids, especially when considering the different health risks they may have. Even though it is a controversial subject, the family should be notified ahead of time to prepare. So that was our student rep. So now we're gonna move on to new business. Um, is there a motion to clump these together, the meeting minutes of December, January, February? So, Mr. Collmore, you're putting the motion, um...
Seconded.
To approve the, no...
I just wanna comment here.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Collmore.
None of the members here have received the packet with the, the minutes on them.
So it's in the email. We received ours by email.
Okay, and, and you're...
You, you and Ms. Tensley-Williams got it today, right? You got yours today, that's what you're saying? So you haven't reviewed it?
Yes, I've, I've reviewed my packet.
You reviewed the meeting minutes.
Uh, on the min- on the minutes of the meeting, I just wanna...
There's just one sitting there, yeah.
Oh, where's the December and January?
There's only, there's only one, it's not, it's not all of them. You, you can't just do one at a time, because...
So, we can't vote on that, but we can vote on the February one that was in the pack yet. Right?
Yes.
So, can I have, is there a motion to table December and January meeting minutes?
Some of them.
And we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. So we'll bring back December and January at our next meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February school committee?
So motioned.
So we have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Burks. Any discussion?
There's just like some small typos that I'll fix real quick.
Any others?
Sam.
Okay. Any other discussion? No, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so motion passes unanimously, so the February meeting minutes, those passed. Uh, ongoing business, updates from subcommittees. Um, I do not have Ms. Brunel here to give her update. Um, I do not have Ms. Brunel here to give her update. I know the, um, policies has not met yet. Uh, diversity, equity and inclusion has not met yet. But today, the finance subcommittee did. So, uh, update, Mr. Wellahan?
Yeah, thank you, um, yeah, we had our first finance subcommittee meeting today. Um, Mr. Soto and his CFO, uh, put together a good presentation, um, just on the upcoming school budget and the pluses and minuses from, um, the revenues that we're receiving through the state. Um, so, um, most of the presentation was positive. Um, we're going to have a printout of the presentation submitted to the entire committee, um, soon. And, um, probably have some future, um, meetings because, um, um, the process is fluid, to say the least, um, with the money coming in from the state. And, uh, I think that's all I had for now, um, I think that's it.
How are your meetings going to be? Are you going to be having them monthly?
Um, I don't think I'll set a set schedule, just, um, I'll talk to Mr. Soto just as the numbers move and he knows more information because the numbers are so fluid and I don't think it's going to be wise to have a set schedule because the numbers are going to be changing. Um, we're going to try to have some minutes, um, made of the subcommittee and we can all review those too.
Okay, great. All right, excellent, so that is that. Uh, quarterly two summary, oh, sorry, Mr. Collmore?
Are the, we're looking legally here. Are these minutes, I mean, are these meetings posted?
Yes, it was. It, the city website, I have it right here. It was right, it was the first one before this meeting. Yep, we already spoke with Sam, we let her know that aren't even our subcommittee meetings. Subcommittee meetings have to be posted the same way just as the, the school committee meeting. And our budget hearing needs to actually be publicized as well in the newspaper. So I have spoken with, with Ms. Garcia about that and we still utilize MASC, um, to help us out as well, um, so that we can make sure that this transition from since Liz has left, i- it goes smoothly. Okay?
Thank you.
No, no problem. Everybody got the quarterly two summary from Desi, are there any questions? Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you, real quick, they said kind of come in and give us, um, updates. Uh, some, I'm not sure whether it was quarterly or not, but they used to kind of make a presentation sometimes. Is that going to happen or are we getting away from that process? That's my only question.
I mean, that, that's what we just covered, the, like, when you say they, I mean technically I'm the receiver, so, I, I meet with you guys monthly and, you know-
Someone from Desi used to come in here and say, "Oh, you're doing good here, you're doing bad there."
That was before we went into full receivership.
Okay, I, I know that, but-
Yep.
That's not the case now, so they've appointed a receiver. And, and my job is to regularly update you on a monthly basis on, you know, everything we talk about in school committee. But on a quarterly basis, I review, you know, all of our data, our Q2, our, our quarterly SIP reviews, our, uh, how we're doing on our annual planning projects that we set at the beginning of the year and give you an update, which is what we talked about earlier. Um, I send that same update to the commissioner.
Okay.
Um, so, so that, that is, you know, the, the update from Desi.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
So I just want to clarify, that's the, uh, information that had the spreadsheets, um, with the information about the next generation MCAS test 2021?
Yes.
So I am completely confused by this. I actually tried to do percentages, do numbers, and the, these numbers do not make sense to me. For someone who has a master's degree in math education, they don't add up to 100% if I tried to do it or, so I'm just not understanding, you know, the, the, the chart that was included based upon the fact that they said there's 36, number of students included, for example, in grade three mathematics was 36. Um, and yet, we have in, um, meeting expectations, you know, we have zero, we have zero, zero, we have 25 in partially meeting and we have 75 in not meeting expectations. That is well over 36, so I'm just not being able to understand the data as it's presented.
Yeah, I mean, this is data that's available on the website, so if you'd like to sit with somebody from my data team and I could certainly facilitate a meeting.
I would love it.
Um, there, you know, this, this information is not-
I know they're combining certain categories again, but I, I just can't understand it and I feel as though, it's not clear to me, how can it be clear to anyone who, you know, is just picking this up to look at it, to see where we stand? It just, it makes, doesn't make sense to me.
It's showing, what, what I'm looking at here is, it's showing what this school is compared to the state average. So you could see each column is school, state, school, state, school, state.
She doesn't have that one, so here's a better idea for you. Go to the Desi website so you have a clearer picture.
I have the school state that was given to us.
You, no, that's not that. Looking from here and the way that it's shaped there, it does not look like it.
So I will definitely take you up on that opportunity to meet with someone to better understand this, thank you.
Yes.
I know, we can't, if we can't understand, imagine our students. But, okay, I think that was it. Um, the only thing that I do want to say is, um, I really would like to see us going back to in person. Um, being that we're, we are going to be lifting the mask mandate, correct? We're lifting it, so I should be seeing people here in the audience. Um, the public, uh, students, our student showcase, um, those that will be, be, um, speaking on certain items. Um, you know, Zoom is great, but Zoom has brought a lot of headaches too at the same time. Um, but I, I really think we need to start moving forward, I mean, buddy, Mr. Wellahan?
I think the governor just extended that, you know, the, the hybrid meeting for like another year.
Yeah.
I, I just don't think we have the ability to just shut it off. I, I prefer in, in, in person. Uh, okay, but it's, in terms of the legalities of it, I think we-
I'm not saying that we have to stop it.
Have to stop it, okay.
Obviously, we are going to be offering, I just said it gives me a headache. Um, but technically, what we put on the, on the, the website is that we're remote Zoom. No, we're not, we're here. Um, and so we need to be able to give the opportunity for the public to come. And now we should be putting out their optional Zoom. This is not optional.
Right.
Zoom is optional. So if, if, um, the community, you know, people that want to speak out on an item, they want to be on Zoom and do their public comment, you know, through Zoom, fine. I have no problem with that, but let's start having people the ability to come here. I feel like, they feel like they can't and I don't want them to think that they can't. I want them to feel that, yeah, you can come, uh, speak out here, you know, let us know how you feel on a subject.
I wholeheartedly support that. And, um, can I, do I make a motion that we allow the meetings to come back to both being in person and via Zoom?
No, it's a hybrid. It, it's been like that, it's just that-
But can we let, make sure that our, you know, people know that we are allowing people back here for our meetings?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and just put it on the, on, when you put up the, the post, the agenda onto the city website, um, don't put down via remote Zoom. Um, say, you could say optional meeting as in person, um, because there are people going to city council.
Yes.
And they're sitting in on those meetings and, I mean, for a city that keeps talking about getting out of receivership, I don't know if anybody wants to zoom the camera over there. Um, let's go for it. It's so optional, I can't say that it's, it's hybrid, optional Zoom. Like for me, optional Zoom, right? Like, if you want to do Zoom, fine. Um, but I don't want people to keep feeling like we are just Zoom. Um, if the public wants to come in here, by all means. Your staff, your cabinet members that are presenting on stuff, instead of them doing it from the seat of their home, they can come in here and do it, you know? And again, that's, that's as well up to you, how you want them to present. But, um, I mean, that's how they do at city council as well. I see other communities, I've been to other school committee meetings, there's people there.
Yeah.
Um-
I miss the people too, yeah.
Yeah, I miss seeing the people.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't have anything else. Did, did you have any announcements or anything, Ms. Soto?
No announcements, I just wanted to thank our, our student reps, they did an amazing job today. Thank you, Kilmari, Cheyenne and Jay, Jay Salie. Um, we appreciate your feedback and thought your updates were, were wonderful, keep them coming.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore?
Yes, I have an announcement to make. Uh, yesterday morning at the St. Patrick's Day breakfast, uh, I was in, I was honored to be there and representing the school committee and, uh, with my banner on and things like this. And, uh, the ambassador from Ireland was there for, for education. And I had a chance to meet with her and, and tell her how, how much we appreciate her coming to the city of Hoyok. And to Wash, she was in Washington the day before with President Biden and, uh, and Congressman Neal. And she talked with me for a short while because of business and stuff like this. But she wanted to let me know that she appreciates everything that the school committees throughout the nation are doing. And she specifically, specifically said, "I'm proud of the city of Hoyok's, uh, commitment to the children of, of Hoyok." And she's, she signed the program book for me, which, which says, and this is to, not just to me, it's to the whole school committee, uh, with gratitude and best wishes that you, for your success in making Hoyok a better school system. And she signed it and I made copies for, for every one of you to take home and be happy to have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collmore, you, you're always representing us, that's, that's the thing, you know? Um, thank you again for being there and for representing the Holyoke School Committee. Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
No, I, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to everybody who participated, Holyoke Icon, the cheerleaders, um, our banner holders, you know, you guys were amazing and I loved being, we're very fortunate to have you guys right next to us so that we can jam while we were marching, so thank you, everybody who participated.
Ms. Burks?
And Dean Tech for restoring Dobbin, the, the horse. And their work on the Grand Colleen's float was absolutely amazing as usual. Um, so thank you to Dean Tech for restoring, uh, the Holyoke Icon.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
It was one of the best parades I've been at for years. Um, I was blown out of the water with so many people, I was just in shock. And I wasn't feeling up to going, but after I went, I'm telling you, it was heaven on earth for me. It was great.
Excellent, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion as second, all the, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Doubt it.
Um, any abstain? No. Motion passes unanimously, meeting adjourns at 7:53 PM. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next month.